Is anybody online out there? I see you making cookies at home. You want to share those? Okay, if not, we'll close this. We can always, if they find them later, they can. It's like rumper room. All right, we'll close this portion of the meeting. We'll now move on to communications. Superintendent, do you have any communications? We'll now move on to student report. Do we have any student reports? Okay, it's a busy time of the year. And I will just say one thing for the students. We had our Chamber of Commerce represented by the businesses. Brandon was there. And and I would say that one out of every two students were from Lemonster getting an award from the business community. And these came from all over the, I forget how many total there were, but Lemonster was well represented. Superintendent, anything for your report?
Sure, so much. Field trips, field days, book fairs, you know. I'm sure you're all opening your wallets. It's very busy, very busy. Just finished two amazing thons. Had the seniors the week before, and then this past Saturday. Brave reviews. Wonderful behaviors and students. I want to really thank the chaperones and teachers that supported students putting on such a well classy. They looked, they looked wonderful. So that was a great celebration. They also had another theater production this week, Friday and Saturday through. That, the theater team here is amazing. So if anybody hasn't taken advantage of one of the performances, please do so. The students work so hard from beginning to end. They own every piece of. And it shows. It's their, their productions are exquisite. So thank you to our theater team again. CTEI last week had their senior awards dinner. Students were recognized and honored by each one of their shops. It was a tremendous night and thanks to culinary provided the food evening and our graphics department did all print. It's really nice. And now we are moving on to our graduations. We have LCE's graduation on June 1st at 1 o'clock at City Hall. And then we have our graduation schedule for June 3rd Doyle Field, 10 o'clock. Those 500 students will be walking in to that field and it is a mass when you see it. It's something really to be proud of. So we're looking for a beautiful day and I hope all.
And I know they'll ask us rain date if there is one. And if there's a rain day on June. Just testing.
It's usually a hot day.
Yeah, it's usually in 90 degrees.
Okay, thank you. Now we have a couple of presentations. A single digit virtual learning grant.
Well, you've heard about this grant once before.
I never got that document you said I was. Did somebody in my office see it? Everything goes into, everything goes into spam now. Everything. If it's sent to more than one person, it automatically, we have so many filters. We have filters for the filters and it's hard to get anything anymore.
We're really excited to get. To move this forward. This would really be a nice book and to alternative offerings for students that at this point or not any venture during their career here at, I would just just need to be virtually and outside of the building, various reasons. Michelle's working very hard to get this through. There is, it's time sensitive. So if you have any questions, she knows it inside.
All right, let her rip. We're going to see pictures and cool stuff. Is this a peek inside of the digital? I read it right, doll? Mic on? Want you to be heard. Digital revolution. Take mine.
Okay, good. So if nobody heard me at first, I'll start over again. That's fine. We submitted a single district virtual school application proposal. We had talked about this presented to the school committee. At the beginning, not the beginning of the school year, but probably a few months ago. It is a quick turnaround for an application to submit for a single district district virtual school application, but the initial proposal has been submitted. And Desi has gotten back to us already with some feedback. I just wanted to go through the initial proposal that we submitted, just to kind of refresh everyone's memory on this. So the student population that we're looking to really serve with this single district virtual school application is students that are requesting additional learning options beyond the traditional models that we have at Lemonster High School, CTEI, or even LCE. This is going to service students grades nine through 12. This is going to be very flexible with our scheduling. It's going to allow for a lot of availability for students who maybe are not able to come in for a traditional school day. They might have additional responsibilities or have some scheduling conflicts. We are really looking to reengage students in, from Lemonster. This is only going to be open to Lemonster resident students. We're looking to personalize learning. Students who maybe who have opted out of school or maybe have done a different track right now, we're looking to reengage them in schooling. And this is, these are the students that we're looking to really target for this virtual school option. We're really looking to have an individualized learning plan to personalize the learning for each one of these students because we know traditional one size fit all model is not going to work for these students. So just to kind of recap on what really personalized learning is, is our aim to really customize learning for each student's strength and their skills. We're really going to take the time to know students, to sit down to individualize those learning plans. Find out what their interests are. They are responsible for all Massachusetts state requirements. They are going to be responsible to take the MCAS. They will be responsible for the core requirements of high school students. But we are really going to make, make sure that they are reengaged in school and play to their interests. So our next steps, based upon the feedback that we received from Desi, we are really going through that feedback step by step. We have until June 12th to submit another proposal to Desi. We have a lot of stakeholders that are involved in this. We are getting feedback from all of those stakeholders. And we plan on reworking this proposal hopefully throughout the summer with the support of the school committee. So we're here in front of you tonight to seek your approval to move forward with this single virtual school. And to really get the final vote to really push this through. We feel like this is really the next step for what students need in Lemonster to catch those students that we're not catching right now. So we're looking for a statement of assurance. And what that statement of assurance is saying to us is that we are going to be able to form this additional school. And it'll follow, follow all of the Massachusetts guidelines for creating an additional school. But that's our next steps in this process.
And do you need the vote tonight?
It'd be great if we could have the vote tonight.
Are you able to bring us through a link to show us an example of what one of the lesson plans would be? Steve, are you able to do that to get it to line? Is there a sample somewhere that we could see?
So we would be using like an edgenuity platform for, for students. So we would be individualizing that. So depending upon like if you were coming in as like a sophomore and you needed, you know, geometry or chemistry, whatever your history, your history was, we'd be able to individualize that learning plan for you. You still have to take your gym credits. You still are responsible for MCAS. So we would have to build that out for you.
Am I going to see somebody if I go on my laptop? Am I going to see a person on the other end?
You're going to be able to see a person on the other end. Maybe not every single day, but we would build out a plan for you so you had frequent check-ins. What we want to make sure is that we're not losing students in this process.
Are we going to see visual things? If I take history, am I going to go to, you know, the battleground and conquered? Am I going to go to Williamsburg? Am I going to see all that?
Yes.
I can ride, we'll do a bus trip.
These online versions are so interactive.
So that's, because this is my dream for 25 years is every kid learns different. I'm probably retrospect, I'm Montessori kid or somebody hands-on. If tonight I left and somebody was trying to reboot a phone that currently they lost the password to. You can, you can tell me all day how to do it. We'll be there for a month. Buy, buy the video up and let me follow it. And I've got it. I mean, I probably, you know, six months and I'll forget how to do it. So I have to go back to the video. Everybody learns differently. And I had this discussion with the superintendent. About a month ago, I ran to a parent at City Hall and her kids have done very well learning online. But at certain courses, they need to be in front of somebody. She does a lot of trips and taking them on visits to places and, you know, almost like homeschooling. I think at the end of the day, this is the model that is going to be out there where for a variety of reasons. And as an example, I keep saying, you'll be able to see an astronaut who just came back from a trip, talking to a million people, some load of podcasts, only visual. They show you everything, bring you inside the capsule and show you it. So I think the future is as many opportunities as we can provide, many of these options. Because some students can't learn online, they really need to be in front of somebody. But everybody's different. Certain, one subject you may pick up on real quick, you know, anyhow, somebody else may need a, somebody in front of you. I mean, it's really the most amount of options we can.
And some of these students may have a hybrid model. They may have online, they may sleep for a class or three, they may come in for. So each, we're thinking in the fall as students come in, we'll bring you different schedules. Some students need virtual and not. So that's.
So the menu is going to get larger as the technology.
And we're hoping also to pull some of our students back that have gone out to other online options, Teca, Greenfield Academy.
They're very happy with it. We've got to stay up with the competition, right?
Absolutely.
Brandon was next.
It looks like for next year, you're projecting up to 80 students. Do you think we're going to fill that year one?
We might. They might not all be full-time, but we might have some students that are taking advantage of some sort of this model.
And is there a hope at some point to expand it beyond Lemonster students if we see this taking off really successfully and we can, you know, steal through?
Yeah. Or actually, so I think the next plan is to bring it.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Middle school?
So we want to make sure that it's running, it's working, stuff with it before we offer to anyone.
No, I think that makes a lot of sense.
The clients for this are that it would only be Lemonster residents.
Okay.
So there may. There may be another option for us to apply for a virtual school like Teca or Greenfield at a later date, but this one that we're asking you to consider is just for Lemonster residents.
And you're going to get.
I don't have a problem with that.
And you're going to get, I bet you're going to get more than 80 students. Some people only take one course. And you allow that? I mean, if I wanted to end my day at 2:00 in the afternoon or 1:00 and then I go to work or something and at my last class is history or English or geometry, that's fine.
The highest students chosen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Poor Melissa's been.
In part, partially was answered by Paula about the hybrid options. But another question is, is say you're taking junior English, is the junior English online going at the same pace potentially? So if you have a student who's out on a medical leave or something like that, they can move in and out.
We had, I pulled some numbers. We had 34 students who were outplaced just this year alone. So that is something that we're going to explore as well. We, we really need to be looking at that to help those students who were out for various reasons and to make sure that they're staying on track with their teachers. So we might be looking at taking those classes that they're being offered in school synchronously right now and being able to offer those on an online platform too. So they can stay up to date with their classmates.
And then the other question is, is I'm hoping this is student or family-led and not necessarily being used as an other option for students that can't be in school.
Families, families need to opt into this. Sound.
Yeah, it's kind of tall. Yeah. Like how, like what are the requirements to be like? How do we vet a person that is needed compared to some of the.
So this is all family, you know, families opt into this, families and students opt into this. This is something that we're really going to work on is the, like the application process over the summer, June and July. We're hoping to go have a good application process for families to come in knowing what the requirements are, knowing what the engagement process will look like, knowing that families are going to, you know, there is going to be some, you know, face-to-face engagement that are required. We don't want to lose students in this process and just have them be online at home. But that is really our next steps of building this out and really looking at what this model is going to have for parameters around it.
Now, is there a plan in place that you see a student falling way behind and it's enough for them that, all right, this isn't for you, we got to get you back in.
Yes, yeah.
The data will tell you that, right?
The data, yeah. It's going to be a lot of data, data tracking on this.
Official intelligence.
Chat GPT, yeah. Our budget, yeah, it's going to, and it's going to be based upon the, if we end up having, you know, 80 students that, that might determine staffing numbers. If we have less than that, that will also determine staffing numbers.
We have some capacity in that we have an alternative, quasi-alternative program. We also have LCE. So we dabbled with this, but I do believe economy of scale in that we may have teachers through wire teachings in two different schools. Like we do with CTU and, and high school at this.
I was going to make a motion to give a statement of assurance for this.
It's a motion, it's a second by Mr. Ron. Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Ron.
Just not another 80.
Not another 80, yeah.
It may have some dropout and some.
Some graduating.
No, you don't. It's a good question. Successful.
I think in a couple of years, they're going to increase it to 100 enrollment.
And what about the fifth?
Or 100.
So what about the bottom part, course in the space? Only 100 people out of all those. It's just a, it's just an application.
And it's just an estimate. We might be able, no, 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 we might be able to increase it.
Because if you read. It's a projection. I realized that. Anticipated enrollments. 175 out of that's anticipated. That's the original 80 and then we're looking at a growth of like 2% per year. It's right up to that number. Out over here where it says first year 15, second year. What is it? I guess basically I was, I'm asking a bad question.
Can I maybe ask another question, which is, do we have the ability to scale upwards? With Desi, if that, if the case.
And scale down as well. So it's very flexible.
I think that might help answer some questions you had.
I mean, this just provides us more options. Then add the fact that all the colleges are now offering free courses to students, which they have, in many cases have to take online unless you go to Pittsburgh State or what might want to choose it. It's just adding more tools to the box. And you know what? Nothing's ever going to replace a good teacher.
Right.
Ever.
Never.
Right? Nobody ever will replace that experience.
So can we help the question?
Coming from the Lemonster public school system, I never had one bad teacher. Never.
Josh, or Josh seconded it.
Anybody else? Questions? We have a first and second all in favor. Those opposed. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Nice job. All right, now we're going to move into some health and wellness. Pass off the chocolate chip, low fat. Dark chocolate. I mean.
I just had a cookie.
All right, pass off the.
I did too.
How about fruits and vegetables?
I can't, can't afford them. Bananas are like 89 cents a pound. I have to eat a half a banana.
So, oh, we'll, we'll get into that when I get to the wellness. So first I want to thank everyone for having me here so that I could present. I'm presenting on two different topics. The first one is the health offices district-wide. And then the second one is the Wellness Committee highlights and, and about our new triennial assessment. So starting with the health office, I, I had sent everyone earlier the district numbers from last year. We don't have our final numbers for this year, but I have a few of them. So our number one diagnosis is asthma. We have 828 students with diagnosed asthma. And there are certainly more that are not diagnosed. And then our second biggest health issue is our food allergies. 587 students diagnosed. And these food allergies can be anything. It could be peanuts, tree nuts, strawberries, mango. It could literally be anything. Then we have for the behavioral emotional conditions, our number one is the ADHD for 564 students. And anxiety is the second one for 226 students. I want to say before I get to the, to the visits, that the total visits for last year was 59,194 with a return to class rate of 92%, which is amazing. This year, I do have the numbers so far, so far as of April. We've had a total of 57,015 student visits with a return to class rate of 93%. So two more months of reporting to go. Oh, it is. So, so for our visits, the most visits and the most timely, well, the, the thing that takes the most amount of time from the nurses is our diabetes, our type 1 diabetics. We are seeing those students multiple times a day. We're checking them, their glucometers, their, their CGMs, their, we're doing blood sugars before meals, we're, we're giving them their insulin, carb counting. So it's a total of 10,301 visits for last year total. And then second to that was the ADHD with 8,446 visits, most of which are related to medications. And then asthma, 7,506. And most of them, once again, is their inhalers and, and being assessed in regards to their breathing and their activities within the classroom and gym. Our total number of kids with special needs, 1,515. And then for insurance, it's 50%, just about 50% have private insurance versus public insurance. We have started a new thing this year, Medicaid billing for state mandated health screenings of hearing and vision. And only hearing and vision can be submitted for billing. A total of $3.38 per hearing vision and $9 for vision screening. And so I'm hoping, I don't have the numbers yet, but I'm hoping that, that shows a increase in Medicaid reimbursements to the city. We have new AEDs in all of our schools, thanks to a firefighter grant. And so that's, that's pretty amazing. So we've had AEDs in every school, but, but these are brand new. Their wifi, they talk to the fire department. If someone leaves the door open, it tells them. If the battery is low, it tells them. If it gets opened, it, you know, and we start using it, it tells them. The great thing about this is if we have someone in cardiac arrest and we have the AED in place, and even though we've called 911, they can see in real time what the cardiac arrhythmias are. So that when the paramedics come, they can better treat that individual in real time.
Amazing.
Yeah. So medication, so going down from that, medication administration, daily meds, we have 200, we had 219 prescriptions. And for the PRNs, 3,852 prescriptions. And those are your Tylenol and Motrin's and whatnot. We administered for the daily meds, 12,302 prescriptions last year. Number one was our psychotropics, which is for ADHD kids, 8,994. PRN doses, we admit, we administered a total of 5,201. And this is mostly, once again, your Tylenol, your Motrin. Screenings for ESPERT. We screened 768 students. ESPERT is the Screen Brief Intervention and Referral to Treatment. This is in grades eight and 10. And it is a way to talk to them about drugs and alcohol and how much they have used within the past year. And most of our kids are really good. And, and those that are having issues with alcohol and drugs were able to refer them and get them the services that they need. BMIs are done in grids 1, 4, 7, and 10. Hearing grades K1, 2, 3, 7, and 10. Vision pre-K, K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 10. And posturals, which is the old scoliosis checks, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. We are hoping again that the state will change that to just once in middle school. So we have a new, well, it's a new grant as of, this is year number three of it. It's DSHS, which is a nurse grant. And with that, we get $120,000 per year for health services. And they have their own performance measures that we're supposed to try to attain and, and they're really great goals. The first one was decreasing the percentage of students that are chronically absent. Well, COVID hit, we flunked that one and we're still going to work on that. And, and I can't say anything more than that. The next one was the increase in percentage of ELL students assessed for unmet health needs. The target goal for that is 90%. Last year, we saw 80.27% in, in assess them for unmet needs. The third goal was to decrease the percentage of students who are overweight or obese. Once again, COVID hit. Something to be said about kids staying at home. And, you know, when they came back last year, they, they weren't able for the year prior to get out and exercise safely at home. And, and it really did show. So we did have 46.5% that were overweight or obese last year. According to this year's data, it is down to 42.5. two point five percent. So we are making improvements now that the kids are in school. The fourth one was increasing the percentage of students who are identified experiencing symptoms of depression and or anxiety or suicidal ideation, and are not currently receiving behavioral health care, that are referred for mental health services by school health counseling staff. Last last year, it it was seventeen point thirty nine percent. We are working on it. The target goal is ninety percent. And and that's a tough goal, because some of the kids are coming in daily for stomach aches or anxiety related. So maybe we saw them forty times and they got one referral, and that would make sense. Fifth one is increase in the percentage of students who are identified as homeless or marginally housed or assessed for unmet healthcare needs. And once again, we we did see and assess eighty two percent. Six was deleted. Seventh goal was increase in percentage of students that have specialized healthcare needs with an individualized healthcare plan. And we do have thirty six point three percent that have an IHP. And then an increase in percentage of students who fail a vision screening with a referral made, meaning that we did the hearing or vision screening or any of the others, and we sent a letter home that said, your child failed vision screening. Please take them to the eye doctor. A lot of times, we contact parents three, four times, and sometimes we get the referrals back. Last year, we got eleven point nine five percent, and we're right around on the same track so far, but we're we're still making an effort to get those referrals back. The state's goal is for us to get eighty five percent back. Some of our biggest goals is hiring and retaining qualified staff. We have eleven nurses in the schools. We still have two open positions in the schools. Six of my nurses are new to school nursing. So the other five are seasoned nurses, and and it really does take a lot in resources to really assist our new staff and helping them to be to stay and to be really good school nurses. So it it does take a lot, and we're we're working hard. We do have a mentor program for them, and we are working hard and trying to get those other two positions filled. Also, our sub nurses, we lost everyone during COVID. We do have three sub nurses right now who help us out when they can. And then trying to to make sure that we can maintain those CPH medication delegation requirements, because they're asking for us to have one nurse for every five hundred kids in each school. And they changed their, they became more stringent with their regulations, and they are now having me submit the Meddel paperwork every year instead of every other year like they had prior. So we're working on that. And right now, we have, we're we're working with a staffing agency to help us with staffing and doing what we can. Any questions about the health offices?
Just really quick, does it have to be an RN or can it be an LPN?
To be a school nurse, you have to be an RN, BSN prepared. We can take associate degrees if you're in a BSN program. I can hire LPNs for subs, though.
All right, any questions?
We have kids that are needier. And and a lot of it is social, emotional, anxiety is increased, depression is increased. So it it's really difficult, because these kids take more time in the health office. You can't necessarily say, have a glass of water, go to the bathroom, go back to class. You have to really work more with them.
And I think the second piece of that is, why are we, and this isn't a question of your team, their their ability, but why are we seeing such a low percentage of referrals being completed?
So I think that the referrals probably, well, for to mental health counselors, I I think that a lot of them are sending them to the social worker or guidance counselor. They're just not documenting it. And and part of that is because we have a lot of new nurses who who may be just making the phone calls and and not clicking on that they sent them there.
I hope that's I hope that's the reason. Maybe good to figure out a way to make sure that is happening. Well, that's be part of it. Part of it.
Yeah. And and usually, it's a collaborative effort. It it's the school nurse, the parent, the guidance administration, the teacher, and and everyone being on board, because I I might say that someone looks like they have a lot of anxiety. And if if perhaps the parent, and and it could be anyone in the picture, says, nope, we're fine, then we we do the best we can. We do the best we can with what we got.
Thank you.
Okay. So now I'm going to go on to the Wellness Committee Highlights, which is a lot more fun.
You're going to do highlights, right?
Highlights.
This is, I mean, I go out, right? Highlights.
This is the highlight.
Like fifteen twenty pages.
I'm 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 not, I'm not going to do all fifteen pages. I gave those to you.
Thank you.
So that you would have it.
And I was able to.
I have my one pager.
Over and over. One of the, one of the issues to just jump, look at type one diabetes. It's, look at the ratio of how many students, how many students have type one and two diabetes?
Students were overweight last year, sorry.
It was almost fifty percent, yes.
That up from before the pandemic, too?
Yes, it was up from, so we were high before, and and then we became higher after the pandemic. But kids were sitting at home. They didn't have access to physical activity.
When you think you're eating healthy.
All right, you're right. I gained a few pounds, too.
You might not be, even when you think you're eating healthy, you might not be necessarily in health. Do a good job marketing bad food to people that make them think it's healthy.
Well, and then if our kids are left home alone, it's foods are easy for them to prepare. And the foods are easy to prepare are higher in carbohydrates and sodium and sugars, so.
That's what I said, it really is. What else is a pound for grapes? You hear that?
Wait for the eggs.
It's grazing. Okay, so go into the Wellness Committee. So, okay, so the Wellness.
That shows your.
It was on top of the Wellness Committee thing. So you should have gotten two packets.
Yeah, I know. There I go. After page twenty four.
Okay, so so Wellness Committee, for those of you who are new, are what started fifteen years ago. It was state mandated. We meet four times a year. Right now, it's virtually. The great thing about that is you can be in your office and still meet with us. We, the members include principals, assistant principals, physical ed instructors, nurses. Chartwell's is an active member, Lumsford Board of Health. We have luck, and we also have other agencies that come in as well. And we're still looking for more. I really need students and parents to to join. And our purpose is to reduce childhood obesity, now that we're talking about it. So in the beginning of the year, we came up with our own goals about increasing student involvement through intramural sports, introducing programs such as box in the elementary school, which is a free program, focusing more on nutrition and nutrition equity, and increasing two percent of students into the healthy range in in one year. And the healthy range is from five percent to eighty five percent. So in regards to that, we we are starting to track our intramural sports. Skyview has been really on top of that, and we're really getting those kids in. They're having fun. They love to move, and it's free. Our healthy BMI range has improved when comparing between this year and last year. So we're we're working in regards to that. We had a grant written by Growing Places for two plant growing towers to grow our own vegetables. And Skyview has already set theirs up. There's also lesson plans involved with that that go with the state core for nutrition education. And Northwest is planning on putting theirs up in the fall. They already have a teacher who's going to be the champion. And once again, we're going to a assist them with the lesson plans and with the whole process. And it's Growing Places. They have people who come out and help us. We did have a nutrition fair at Francis Drake. Unfortunately, it rained that night, so our turnout could have been better, but we had it. And we also had wellness fairs at LHS in Sammaset, and we will at Skyview on May twenty six. This is the first time in three years that we have had a wellness fair. And one of the kids at Sammaset looked in and said, is this free? Am I allowed to go in? And and it was just really cute, because they had no idea what this was. So then we got into the you must do this triennial assessment by June. So we did the policy review, and it was myself, Michelle Oliveri, and Colleen Gilholy. And then we we got our scorecard for that. And then we did the aligned practices, the well sat eye. And we decided to send out Google surveys to each and every school to find out what's really going on. So some things were for Chartwell, some things were for the principal, and some was for the staff and the gym teachers. So we got a scorecard in regards to section one and two, which I do have here for you to look at. And there's a lot of, a lot of promise that we have in regards to this. So we we did have a couple of things that were strong and aligned for both policies and practice, and meaning that it's in our policy, but we're also doing it. And that was our families eligibility for free and reduced lunch. And of course, now everyone gets free and reduced lunch. Actually, everyone gets free lunch and free breakfast. And the District Wellness Committee, and the fact that we meet four times a year. So then the next section is our implementation plan. And that's, really, we we identified through the assessment that our wellness policy could be better communicated throughout the district. So we're coming up with ways to better communicate our policies in the beginning of the year and throughout the year, so that everyone's on the same page, including the families, the staff, and the administrators. We're also exploring physical activity alternatives for those who are unable to participate in physical activities, for whatever the reason, so that they have something else to do that's still somewhat physical, but so that they're meeting the guidelines, but it's within their abilities. And then section three is updating policies. Now, the about this is, there's a lot, when when I first started writing policies thirteen years ago, it was supposed to be a broad statement, just a statement. Now the state wants every little thing in the policy. And so it's more like a procedure and protocol. We are doing so many of these things, even though they are not written in the policy. We are already doing them. So it's just reviewing and going through and updating our policy to reflect what we're already doing and what's mandated by the state. And then section four was our opportunities for growth. And we do have many opportunities for growth. We were told to focus on those that are federally mandated. And these include nutrition education, which these food towers will help towards. And but there's a lot of things that kids are doing, that teachers are doing. So they're they're going to shoal and farms and apple picking. Let's work on making sure that the standards for nutrition are put into that field trip, because I I strongly feel that we are doing a lot of this. We're just not taking credit for it. And then offering professional development regarding standards based nutrition education. And noting that competitive foods are being sold in some schools during the day as fundraisers, really working with the PTO in regards to addressing what they're doing for fundraising, because we haven't been able to sell candy bars for fifteen years now, and we still run into telling people they can't sell candy bars. So that's really about it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes, May first, twenty twenty three. All in favor? Those opposed? Any policy subcommittees? Any other committees? Finance updates?
Finance update?
Thank. Vote on Keystone Representative? Caps Representative? We'll take him and block. Vote on Caps. All right, we'll take him in a block. Thank you. It's a car. Get you an EV car with artificial intelligence that runs it. All right, so we have two positions. Is there a vote? A motion? Go ahead, Ron. All right, and we have a second. All right, all in favor. So we have a vote on Keystone Representative and Caps. Vote on the Washington trip?
Out of district.
Okay, so motion to approve the Washington DC trip? Oh, exciting. I wish I could go. Second, those all in favor? I think we went to that. We went to some, our trip was, I went to a park in Worcester. It was there. Kids get to go to Washington. Good for them. Acceptance of a donation? Do we have a donation to accept?
A class of nineteen seventy two donated four thousand one hundred.
Nice. Okay. Motion? Second, all in favor? Obsolete equipment?
Dust machine system that is no longer used, so they'd like to get rid of it.
Dust.
Dust.
Dust, you know, ventilation.
It's an automotive.
Collects dust. Some people collect things. Very interesting. Anybody wants, you can bid on. We have a motion? Eileen, a second? All right, Sal, thank you. All in favor? The rest of you can suck dust. Vote on the last day of school, could this could be the most important vote?
I have seen many, many emails on this. Is, can we have it a half day?
All right, what is this? It's a conflict of interest. You can't. You've got to benefit from it. You've got to benefit from it.
We motioned for it to be a half day.
Yes, please.
I'm motioning to have last.
And a second. All right, so you could be the second, Sal. I was just kidding. All right, when is it going to be?
June twenty third.
Twenty third? These years get longer. Let's break that. All right, all in favor? Those opposed? New role business?
Uh, just information?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. All right. So the first one is in regards to the.
Custodians?
Yes. All right, you heard the recommendation. Is there a second by Ross? Any questions or comments? There shouldn't be. I'm sorry, Josh. Sorry.
You can Ross from now on.
All in favor? Thank you.
And the second?
Second vote is the.
Independent.
Okay, independent contractors for two point five. Is there a second?
Hey, I'll make them. I never did a second.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Opposed? What else do we have? Anybody want to make a motion now? He didn't get through, make them the first. Buy this man a dust collector.
Have one.
All right, all in favor? Rest of yous can stay here.
Thank you.